Not be very long. My remarks are really specifically directed to the board tonight because I have something I want to ask you to do. And you said Lucinda is on.
Lucinda is on the Zoom, yes. Lucinda, can you hear Ramon? So so.
Okay. And regarding with the board, which I will be on after tonight's, well, for two months that following the the resolution tonight. I want to tell you a couple of things. First of all, and people who know me and my friends know that I did not intend to. I did it because I think we need the board. But also same deal with God be some young people. If they didn't get them to run, that's why I put my name in. But I'm not getting any younger. I'm a couple of years younger than our president, so I guess I can handle the job. And and also those who know me know I do have a pretty good memory. And so I hope I can offer something. But I also have a request. Yeah, it'll sound like it's just me.
My son was the same way when he was. My 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 son was getting in trouble at school, performing second class or something, or no.
Do you, whoever's listening, if you could mute your phone? Please, thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see, where was I? See, that's. Your personal thought real quick. One of the things that that I plan on doing is asking the board do more work. Um, more often. Other than part of the version that I think I'm. Legion. Um, typically, I mean, in this, I'm not criticizing just this board because it's pretty common of, you know, city councils and other other government agencies across the board that most of what you do is reactionary. And I I'm for planning ahead, and that's what I think the board needs to start doing is spend the time to look down the road and try to figure out where we're going, how we're going to get there. That type of thing. And I think we can do it with enough effort. But at the same time, I do understand, you know, that trying to entice other people to run for the board, which we couldn't this year. Uh, there there's not much incentive, I guess. And so this is only actually a a pretty small incentive, I think, that what I would like to do, the board to do is tonight to consider and patiently consider directing your attorney, I assume you're the new attorney.
Yes, sir.
I hope Eddie can introduce you to all of us.
That's next.
That I would like the board to consider directing your attorney to preparing ordinance for your next meeting. And that ordinance is to increase the amount paid to the trustees. Um, it's, they get twenty five dollars a month maybe once a year, I think, if I have that right, Sarah. But and and I'm not suggesting it be a salary. This is not and never will be a professional board or you know, people who are doing it for the money. But I I think it's a little bit of encouragement both ways, both for the board members to maybe do a little bit more and also for the public to expect a little bit more from the board. And so my suggestion, if you can take it from that, first of all, I think probably all of the board members know, maybe the public doesn't, is that a a board like this cannot increase the the pay that they give for their term of notice. And that's why if it's going to be for the next term, it has to be next month. Um, why I'm asking tonight. My suggestion is to increase it from the twenty five dollars a month now, and I don't even know whether it's written as per month or per meeting, but I would suggest do it per month. And I suggest raising that twenty five dollars by twenty five dollars for the next year. Making it fifty, and in the same ordinance, would increase it twenty five dollars each of the following two years. So for the next three years, it would go from twenty five to fifty, seventy five and a hundred dollars a a month. I think that that's reasonable. I think if you look at other towns, small towns, large, you know, none of them are getting as little as this. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ramon. Sarah, was that all the public comment?
Yeah.
All right. Well, Clay, I will let you introduce yourself so I don't mess up your last name. I got the Clay part right, I think.
Um.
You have to have your mouth right in it.
Right.
Yeah, you got to be pretty close.
So my name is, how's that? My name is Clay Bookner. Uh, full name is Clayton. How much time do I have here?
It's your report.
I don't have a report, um, just to introduce myself. I started, just real, give you a brief background on what you are paying for. I started with the U.S. Army JAG Corps on active duty in two thousand and six. I was on active duty for six years. In two thousand and twelve, I separated from active duty and went to the reserves. I'm still in the Army Reserve, so I'm a lieutenant colonel. And I currently serving as the ninety-fifth Training Division Judge Advocate in Fort Sill, Oklahoma. And I move around about every three years, just like an active duty personnel would. I stay in the same place, but I have to travel. Um, after I separated active duty in two thousand and twelve, I started working for the Defense Contract Management Agency. So I did big government contracts, um, and got into uh fraud. And that coupled with my background as a felony prosecutor for the Army, um, kind of lent itself more towards uh government law, I'd say. And so when I moved my family eight years ago from Southern Illinois, uh St. Louis Metropolitan Metropolitan area to Pagosa Springs, I got my first job as the Pagosa Springs County Prosecutor, and then um and then I became the town judge, and I was municipal judge for a year, and then the town attorney position opened up. And from there, I started realizing how much I enjoyed practicing municipal law, representing towns, especially small rural towns in Colorado, that there was a big need for that and that nobody was doing it. Um, and I uh switched my sole practice, which um it's just me and my legal secretary. Um, but so I'm the I'm the sole attorney in my in my firm. I switched, kind of pivoted to a almost full-time municipal um law format, and so I represent um many towns, and they're all similarly situated rural Colorado towns um as Paken. And I've been doing that now for um off and on municipal law since two thousand and sixteen. And so um my background in municipal law of about seven years, um and and particularly Colorado municipal law, I believe, will help um with whatever whatever, you know, interests and concerns you guys have. I'm I'm really looking forward to, you know, putting my um practice um into play with this town. I'm also looking forward to getting to know everyone and um especially my board, who, um as you all know, is the client, you know, I I want to do what's best for the town, but I I answer to the Board of Trustees. Um, and so if I ever you know, have, if I if I will never be rude to you, but if I ever can't answer a question for um a citizen, or that's something that, you know, is confidentially determined between uh me and a board, that's why. And so just understand that kind of role so that you understand I um I do take my position seriously, this um my confidentiality with the trustees and the privilege, the attorney-client privilege that we have is um very important for the running the business of the town. Um, but also I I do like to speak with people and and get to know them, and so, you know, don't be shy, uh shake my hand and uh don't be scared by the tie. Um, I wear a suit every day and or or military uniform every day for a really long time. And so when I come to a meetings or if I'm in the courtroom, um, I put on a suit, a shirt and tie because it helps transition my mind to what I need to do. Um, and it's nothing to do with trying to show you up or be fancy. It just really does help me mentally. Um, you know, assume the role that I think is really is really important and that one that I'm really looking forward to uh with this town.
All right. Thanks, Clay.
Yeah.
We certainly appreciate you coming this evening. And so one thing I want to say is I want to say thank you for your your service to our country.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, certainly appreciate that. We will go ahead and move on then to item two dash one, approve the meeting minutes from the January eighth regular meeting. Is there any board discussion on the minutes as presented? Lucinda, do you have any? No. All right. If there's no discussion or revisions for the January minutes, I would entertain a motion to accept, adopt the minutes.
So this is Tom, and I'll make a motion to approve the January minutes as.
I'll second it. This is Lucinda.
All right. That came across very nice and clear. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? So carry. Moving on to item two dash two, discuss and vote on adopting Resolution twenty twenty four dash six, which is canceling the twenty twenty four regular election. Sarah?
Yes, so in twenty twenty, the town can adopt an ordinance that states that if the only matter before the voters is the election of persons to alter, and they've got the closing business on the sixty-fourth day before the election, there are not more candidates than offices to be filled, then the governing body can by resolution cancel the election and declare candidates elected. And on the sixty-fourth day prior to the election, which is April second, twenty twenty four, um we had one open seat mayor and one candidate. We had four open seats for trustee and four candidates. So we drew up a resolution to cancel the election and to declare all candidates elected.
All right. Any board discussion on Resolution twenty twenty four dash six? All right. I would entertain a motion for Resolution twenty twenty four dash six.
This is Tom, and I make a motion that we adopt that on twenty twenty four dash six, canceling twenty twenty four regular.
All right, we have a motion.
This is Lucinda, and I'll second it.
All right. Thank you, Lucinda. So we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash six, which will cancel the twenty twenty four regular election. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? So carry. Moving on to item two dash three, zoning board request. Discuss and vote on the next steps for the following building permits for Sharon Owens at four ten Main and also for Michael Ebert at six oh nine Main. Ed, I believe you're here this evening to present zoning boards request.
Ed, you're also vice chair for the zoning board. Let me give, let me give a little bit of timeline of what we've been doing, building permits.
Ed.
Okay, go. And thank you. I need to remind her again. But I'd like to like to give you kind of a rundown, particularly for for Clay, so he understands where, why we're, we are where we are tonight. Okay? So basically, how did we get through tonight? In in this past summer, we had some comments from folks in town saying that the town doesn't enforce the codes and ordinances. So the zoning board, we decided to start tracking the building permits, particularly any building permits that were open or closed for one to three years. We started looking at those permits. We also wanted to look at the building permits that had been open beyond three years as well. Uh, with with that, we started tracking on a spreadsheet all of the building permits the last three years that have been open and the status that that they're in, so everybody through transparency would know where they're at. We had the board and trustees approval to do so as well. Going through those permits on August twenty first at our twenty twenty-three zoning board meeting, we reviewed the open permits that that were still open. We reviewed six oh nine Main Street, four oh nine Main Street, four ten Main Street, three twenty Quartz Lane, and one eighteen Armstrong. And that evening, four ten, or excuse me, four oh nine Main Street, which is a property owned by the Gibbs, provided a nice letter to explain what what's going on with their building and how it's beyond the two years and all the plans. The board looked at that letter, approved it, that that that's a good update, so they fell off the list. At that time, I was at the meeting, Ed Herman was at the meeting, Gail McGivney were present at the meeting. The zoning board approved to have letters sent to the above owners, minus the Gibbs. So the letters were sent. And I will give you I'm only going to give you the copy of the of the two letters of the two permits we're talking about. Also, going to provide to Clay, so he has an idea. Everybody else in town knows these properties. But you've got some visuals of what the properties are. So we we did ask the town clerk to draft the letter for us, which she drafted and mailed the letter regular, regular mail. But I will read just the context of the letter. Both of them are very similar, except for their addresses are different. Now, Picken Board of Zoning Adjustments requests an update on your open building permit obtained in two thousand and fifteen. According to the town zoning code, building permits are valid for two years. If a project is not completed within the two-year timeframe, the zoning board requires regular updates where your permit may be canceled. They submit a report as soon as possible on the pre-mail approved the USPS.
Yeah, tell Jennifer I just dialed in.
So now, just for reference, though, I issued a copy of the building permits. I'm I'm not sure, Eddie, how you want to address it. Do you want to do the one at a time or?
Yeah, I think so.
So so first one I gave you without paying attention to it is uh Michael Ebert, which is six oh nine Main Street. As you can see on the first page, two thousand and fifteen, Michael did give a permit for jacking the house with new supports is what he put on the structure that consists of at the time, Randikowski was our building inspector. He labeled it as a remodel. Uh, no bearings is required. Uh, electrical permit was to be required, which I'm not sure if Clayton knows, but the town is picking lies upon the state of Colorado for electrical and plumbing permits. We go to the next page, I did a search for the state of Colorado, the six oh nine Main Street. There has never passed an electrical permit hold for that property.
Okay. All right.
So then then we'll move on to the next permit. This one gets a little more complicated. Next, the next property is Sharon Owens in two thousand and eight. She secured a building permit to take down the back part of the house, sand paint the new tin roof on the new footer with concrete. The building inspector at that time was James Sharpton, who put the special remark to remodel other remodeling in existing space, work pre-existing building up to a structural ceiling. Haveable space, remodel will not make building more not. Again, it's as an electric permits that require subject as well. In two thousand and nine, another permit was filed. Uh, the only comments on it is that it's a frame permit. Barrens was required, approved to rebuild on corrected foundation. In due addition to meet ten foot set. Two thousand and twelve, the third permit, hold on it. Prepare siding, windows, doors. I'm not sure what that.
Parrot.
Parrot. Parrot. Interior walls, structural roof being new window in the rear, add sheathing divested exterior walls. Ian Randikowski was the building inspector at that point that issued the building permit back in two thousand and twelve. It replaces the foundation permit. And then he says the front deck may not be replaced without that. And if you go to the last page, state of Colorado plumbing and electrical. There was an electrical permit pulled for for a rough in, it was seven. Permit was expired. Okay? Let let you know what the permits were, what they were for. The letter that is sent to the property owner. Um. We did receive an email back from Sharon Owens while handing this out. We did not receive any type of communication from Michael Ebert. Sharon Owens' email is pretty simple, says, I mean, we see your letter requesting a report on permits obtained in oh nine and twelve. So I don't have copies of the permits. Can you please be specific what has been pleaded on the permits? I don't believe there's anything outstanding. I did speak to Sarah Giff at Town Clerk. It was most helpful in answering many of my questions. But I also want to address the board of zoning adjustments, which make these requests. The permits are quite old and stated they expire after two years. I don't understand why after so many years, the letter has been sent regarding the permits. I look forward to receiving your response. Thank you very much. Then, January fifteenth, zoning board adjustments. Let me back up October sixteen, sorry. October sixteen, a board meeting, we asked that a certified letter be sent to Sharon Owens and to Michael Ebert. That was approved by, voted on, approved by Jesse James, myself, and Herman at the meeting. My understanding is that the town clerk did draft a certified letter sent to the property owners, although we have not seen it. Uh, also, she did tell us that she sent the letter out, uh certified. Did not receive anything back, I believe, from Sharon Owens. It was returned as.
Right, the letter was returned. It was not picked up.
Okay. So I I don't have the certified letter sent to Sharon. Uh, we did ask Sarah at one of the meetings, she stated that basically the same letter sent out um in writing. Then, on January fifteenth, Jesse James read a letter from an email that he received that was sent to, or believed to be sent to Sharon Owens. And it says, I have been receiving your letter. Sorry, the wrong one. It was dated November twenty first. Sent from Gail McGivney. My belief is that it went back to Sarah and to Justin, uh Justin Erickson. I don't believe it was sent through this email straight to Sharon Owens. But this letter was sent, whatever the reason for, this is what was sent. The letter sent, or this is what was drafted, excuse me. The letter sent to you was done erroneously. On behalf of the zoning board, would like to sincerely apologize for any thanks from your party. The decision to send you a letter was made when I was personally not at the meeting. My opinion, your permit is moot, because the twenty twenty-two code says all permits issued hard to this code make the thing to completion. They can hope to see you again someday sincerely, again. At that point, when that letter was read at the meeting in January, I made a motion that we send these two permits to the Board of Trustees to decide on what to do. Zoning code go to seventeen H simply states that if a building project cannot be completed within two years, the property owner must provide a bid progress report yearly or more often, discretion of Board of Zoning Adjustments to the Board of Zoning Adjustment with an estimated time of construction, which is what we asked for in the letters that were mailed for sure in the USPS mail. I'm gonna, I'm thinking Sarah, the board certified letter was left. Then if you go back into section nineteen, the zoning code and the violations, let's talk about incentive nineteen B. Know the zoning board of adjustments for its designated purpose and fairness benefit violation code and notify this person responsible for the violation in writing the certified mail to the address on record, the return receipt by electronic mail available and show order that are written responsibly made to the zoning board adjustment event on date. The date of mail. Copies of such notifications shall be forwarded to the board of trustees. Uh, it's my belief that the certified letter, they know the regular mail letter definitely meant. Um, so I believe we followed the zoning code property, the similar letters, asking that they simply give us an update for the property. And then under the seventh, uh, excuse me, nineteen C, fifteen days, you see the red responses anywhere. Fifteen days you see the red responses on your adjustment, the person responsible for the violations, so they'll develop a fine correction. They never really see. Then I would just point out. Section twenty. Question twenty, under office. Section twenty talks about the offense and penalty that could be. That's not my decision, that's. Board of trustees' decision. So, with that, I'm open to any questions in my bag.
All right, thanks Ed. I think one of the questions that has come up with this is if we look back. At, uh, section fourteen. Non-conformance. E. I think there's been some question about whether this, where it says previously approved uses any building or structure for which a permit has been. Issued prior to the passage of this code may proceed to completion. And, I don't know, did you get a chance to review?
Briefly.
Yeah, okay.
Are you, are, were you gonna ask the land use development, to bring you the land use development code?
Well, that's, I think that's the problem. One of the problems right now is there's been some discussion back and forth about if this section E. Basically supersedes where the permit has expired or seemingly expired. And what should happen at this point?
Or does, if I could add something, or does section E only pertain to non-conformance?
I, I don't have that pulled up.
Yeah.
Give me one second to pull that up.
So that's under the non-conformance section. And there's a question about if that applies to the rest of the code, that, so basically. Saying any building or structure for which a permit's been issued prior to the passage of this code may proceed to completion. Well, I guess that's part of the thing is, we're really wondering about what is completion.
Yeah, so I I did briefly review this and I, um, let me frame the question to make sure I'm answering the right question. You want to know whether or not you believe this section of the code is applicable for. Previously permitted buildings prior to this code, correct? And whether or not, or whether or not they're only applicable to non-conforming buildings? Is that correct?
That is.
So, if you go up to the top of section fourteen, this is kind of a bootstrap argument, but it makes a lot of sense if you just think about it. In in kind of a linear format. It it states in the non-conformance, um, section. That the code is basically recognizing all the buildings. Right before this code as non-conforming buildings, as a default. If you look at the language, it says this code allows the continuation of such uses of structures. Oh, excuse me, the structures that are not in performance with this code may be found to be in existence at the time of passage of this code. You see that? And so, wh- what clauses like this, and this is a very, um. This is a very standard code, like you guys got it from someone else, or someone who's written these codes before wrote it, it's, this is very kind of boilerplate. And what that, what what the language means is that. You're recognizing that basically every building before this code was adopted is not conforming. Right? Because you, it was not adopted under this code. And so, vis a vis, it's unreasonable to ask any owner out there with these buildings and permits from. Previous codes to all of a sudden be in conformance with this. And so the answer is very simply, yes, this applies because. That any building permitted before this code is technically not conforming. Just by the passage of the code alone. So, what we're looking at then is, uh, previously approved uses. They have to complete. Under the previous permit, right? So you're basically. Preloading a variance. Right? But when you pass this code, you're expecting everything eventually to catch up. As soon as somebody puts in a new permit, you know, they have to bring up whatever it is, their lighting to new code or whatever it is. But these previously approved uses from previous codes and permits. You don't have to be protected, otherwise you'd have to go down the line, everybody's house, everybody's building, say, oh, you know, that light's not right, or. You know, your pony wall isn't up to our new code, and it would just be a nightmare for everybody. And so, um. What you're saying is, this, the E really has to do with permits in progress. Okay, so if you see any building or structure for a permit that has been issued prior to the passage of this code, so you've applied for a permit. You haven't completed the the construction of that permit, or completed whatever that permit allowed, you're allowed to complete that even though this code passed. And so, non-conforming, everything before it's not conforming by default. E has to do with anything in progress. And then they get to complete it. Now. If it's not complete. Then whatever that permit allowed them to do to that point. That's it. And now they have to conform with the new code under the new, under, and under a new port, our new permitting format. No, it's a lot. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, so. I got a couple of questions for you. So would they have then to continue building at this point, secure a new building permit under the new code?
If 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 the building is incomplete, so what I heard, and I'm not, this is a lot. Um, and I haven't seen this yet, but what I understand, trustee give is that. Basically, we have a very old permit. The permit only contemplated. Partial, partial completion. Which might have, was, which it was a mistake that you can't correct, because you can't go back in history and fix that. And it's been sitting unfinished. Right? Well, now what you have is an incomplete building, which after a certain amount of time, there's, I'm not going to get into the, we have so many different options with this. I mean, you can declare it abandoned, you can, I mean, there's all sorts of things you can do. To leverage an owner to do, to complete a project. But under. Like, if we're looking at this, this one, for example. They're gonna have to submit a permit to complete it. And until then, we can hold, you know, with proper notices, we need to notify them that, hey, we'd like for you to complete this building. At this point, we can't give it a certificate of occupancy. It's been beyond two-year construction plan, and IBC also contemplates timelines, even if we don't have them adopted, we can default to the international, or international building code. And then we, we are nice. And we get them to complete it. And if they're not, and if. We're nice and they don't complete it, then we move on to other options. Fines, liens, reclosures, et cetera.
Okay, the other, the other question I have for you is. Even though these were done by, under the two thousand and twelve code. The two twelve, the two thousand and twelve code also stated. That if you can't complete it in two years. You're providing updates, no updates have been provided. So does that completely just go away because of the section fourteen non-conformance?
Yeah, I mean, I think. Well, I mean, in in this case, I think what they did completed to the permit, just the permit wasn't complete, didn't contemplate complete construction, right? So that's not, that question doesn't, doesn't matter. I know, I mean that in a rude way, I just mean, we don't even have to answer that question. The reason I'm avoiding it is because. That's the answer to that question, if we were in that situation, say with another building, maybe we are in that situation with another building. That depends on how much risk the town is willing to take. I would say, because I'm not terribly risk averse, that. Yes, if you were given two years and you didn't complete it, and you didn't. Abide by that original two thousand and twelve code. Then you've lost your grandfather privilege, and now you must come under compliance with the new code. That's how I would advise the board to handle that.
And. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your insight on that. That's what we've been asking for.
Okay.
Isn't there perplication on that? There's been a lot of discussion against them. The box is only board editors in, in town, the building inspector has to. How it pertains, but I, I think at this point. It's in board trustees' hands of what you want to do. I.
Well, it, it seems to me that realistically, these permits are pretty much a moot point. Both of these. Owners need to apply for a new permit. Is that? Clay, did I?
I, that, that would. With the, without being deep in the, the, having all the intricate knowledge on its face, that's what it looks like to me, yes.
Yeah, that. The zoning board's gonna do whatever you ask us to do.
Right, so. I mean, that's, that's kind of what I see is, at this point now. It doesn't matter about the two-year, any of that, that's from, I'd heard from Clay that basically that's a moot point now.
And I can answer that a hundred percent. So when did the new land use code come into play?
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so that's easy. Both of these are easy analysis, two thousand and eight and two thousand and fifteen. They're more than two years old, and if we haven't had updates on them and they're not completed, then you, they've lost grandfather privilege and we move on.
So now, just, just to. A little bit more, so if we, if we're looking at the one for Mike Lieber here. The permit seventeen dash twenty fifteen. It says the construction was to consist of jacking the house and new supports. That's all this permit covers. So to me, if. And I'm, know it has, the house has been jacked up, there's been new supports put under it. That's really the end of. That building permit.
The concern I personally have on that one is that a built and electrical permit was required.
So I guess, to me, that falls under the state's jurisdiction. Well, we don't, we don't enforce electrical code.
Yeah, but we issue certificates of occupancy, don't we?
Under the twenty twenty-two code, we do not.
We do not.
We'd like your advice on that.
Who issues a certificate of occupancy? Well, there is one, there has to be. By law, you have, you have to have a certificate of occupancy there. From a local housing authority or someone. So we'll discuss that probably offline, that's another topic, okay? I mean, so, let me, let me just say this then about the electrical. It's not part of the permit, has nothing to do with this, it's a completely separate issue. Right? So we'd have to look at that from. You know, from a completely stoked pipe. Perspective, meaning it has nothing to do with. The foundation, if they did this and they were allowed to do it, and we gave them the permit to do it, and they did it, then they're fine. Electrical issue could be something completely different.
All right, just, did you have anything else, Ed? All right.
Okay, so this is Tom view, and, uh, I did. Check with Mr. Mikowski. Because at the time that Michael was working on this house, uh, it had. Uh, septic and it had water and it had electricity. And his response, when I asked him about the X on the electrical mark, was, well, if he does any electric work, he's gonna have to get a permit. It's an old house and probably does not have enough outlets. And, uh, anybody in their right mind. Uh, if, if you're jacking up a house and crawling around underneath there. That might be a good time to get electrical permit and get somebody underneath there before he covers things back in. But that was his response, he was the building inspector, and his response was. Any electrical work will require a permit. And so, he X that in. So. While it does say other permits required. And I questioned him a little bit about this. It's required if you do it. That was his thing. So, um. And I. I, I enjoyed my conversation with Rand. Uh, Rand is very knowledgeable, he has good memory. And he does not mind at all sharing his opinion. And, uh, I, I had to ask you twice to nail him down on this. Okay. Tell me again. Why is there an X in that slot? And he said, well. That house has only got X number of outlets in it. I know he needs more wire, and he's gonna want to do this. But they didn't. They pulled no permit, they haven't done any wiring, so. Uh, I'm gonna fall kind of on what Eddie and, and, like, you're. Have surmised is that, uh. And we see electrical go in. Poles and other things go in, and the town is, we don't get really involved with it. That's a state, it's a state permit, and a state inspector, and state, and so, uh, I think probably that takes Michael out of the mix. As far as Sharon Owens is concerned, um. As she said, this permit's really old. And you read down through all the things. And we got down to the last thing, which was put on sheathing rapid and tieback. That's the last thing on that permit, and there were no more permits taken out. She should have taken out. Some more permits, and at least got, if she had. Put siding on that and made it street presentable, nobody would ever have been asking any questions. Well. So, um. The, the idea that, uh, at this point, because it has been so long. Now you need a new permit to double check your electric problem. How many years is the state electric code gonna? Let you have this permit without coming back, and you're gonna have to get a new electrical permit, they're gonna have to do a number of rough in inspection and then move on from there. Um, so. I am, I'm glad for the information here this evening. And, uh. Thank you.
Welcome. Hey, I do have a. Two questions, but one for the language is. Not directly to these two pets, but there is some clarification. On the electrical plumbing permit. According to our code, and depending say, we do rely upon the state plumbing and electrical permits. So, under electrical, state of Colorado requires electrical, that, and same thing for plumbing. Is there any? As far as the town, we don't do any inspections of electrical or plumbing. Is there any responsibility on the town to verify when a permit, the building permit is called and it requires electrical plumbing permit? That we at least verify if it's been pulled.
Well. That's, that's my concern with what you stated with. Our lack of oversight regarding issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Typically, if not a hundred percent of the time. Someone has to issue a final certificate of occupancy. If it's not us, you should know who it is, and if you don't know who it is, and it's not us, and. You might have a bigger problem. But. Regardless of who does those inspections, because we can get, just for an example, we have a house, and I'm gonna simplify this, I know that's not this simple. You have a. Electrical plumbing. And structural. Permit inspection, okay? We're gonna go look at the foundation, we're gonna go look at your walls, we're gonna make sure you have electric, we're gonna make sure you have plumbing. Check, 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 those could be four separate. Independent inspectors, as long as they're certified plumbers and they have all their state permitting rights and. That there's, they're the ones the state sends to say, okay, yeah, your plumbing's good, Joe Schmo plumber, state inspector, great, got it, he checks the box. Until all those boxes are checked. Then we don't issue certificate of occupancy. So without a CO. Then we don't know, then there's no oversight as to whether any of those things got done. So that's why I probably saw in my face, I was concerned that we're not messing with certificates of occupancy, or have, at least have oversight. When they're issued, because. We could have buildings that require all these things, and then never, like this one, this, if once we saw electrical. Checked, what, what, what will happen in the future is we'll say, okay. That requires electrical, so yes, we approve this permit. We are revoking your permanent certificate of occupancy and giving you a temporary until we see that electrical. And once we see that electrical, we'll reissue your permanent, your temporary goes away and off you go. If not, we revoke it, you know. You say, okay, your temporary's about to run out. We're gonna kick you out of the house. Do you really want that, right? And so, I mean, you do it a nice way, but that's how you deal with it, and so that's, I don't know, obviously, you know, how you guys do it, I'm, we will have to talk about that, but that is, yes, that is someone's responsibility, and you do that with the checklist and the final CO. Typically issued by a local government authority.
We've had discussions at the last meeting about the final inspection checklist. Looking at the simplicity of.
So, we're in discussions now about changing, making some changes and revisions to the zoning code. What I hear from Clay is, we need to make sure and get in CO, final inspection, and who's gonna have the authority to do that and et cetera. All right?
My sidebar recommend. Where we have.
Can you get the?
Where we have play available.
Right. Yeah. All right?
Oh, I get it.
Is that it? All right. Thanks, Ed.
Yeah, can I add, I, I am gonna throw another one up there. Is, to give closure to this, to give closure to this, to these two property owners, would it be wise that the board of trustees sent a letter to them explaining that their permit is so old that they wish to continue or restrict construction, that they should be willing for this?
I think that would probably be wise. Anytime we see construction going on to any house that they need to be notified that County Pittkin does have a zoning code and there are some requirements and that would probably be nice to let them know, I think.
If, and, these permits are completed, correct?
Yeah, basically, those two permits are completed by what they're written for, so what we need to do though is just like with Sharon, is, you know, if, if you're gonna put siding on, and we recommend you put siding on to protect your investment, but that's just a a suggestion, is if you're going to have siding put on, you're going to apply for a new permit, this old one is not gonna cover it.
And that's all I'm asking.
Do you want that letter to come from the board of trustees, or personally, I gotta come from board of trustees.
I'm fine, we can, we can get a letter draft, just to let them recognize where they're at. The existing permits are done, complete by what they were pulled for, and if you wanna do additional work, you need to check and verify that a building permit may be required.
Thank you.
But this is, I'm just gonna stir the pot just one more little bit. And this has to do with Michael's stuff. As I said, Michael has electricity. And Michael is, has not been done, he hasn't done anything, but he is anticipating having that done.
From what Rand says?
Do what?
From what Rand says?
No, this is not from what Rand says.
Okay, so this is from Michael?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, actually, this is from Ms. Cox. His fiancee. Laura, I think is her name.
Okay.
She said, "Yeah, we, we get some money together and we're gonna get some more electric in here, because what we have, it's just not enough."
Right.
And old homes just never had enough. New homes frequently don't have enough. So, so my question, I guess, is then, if it's still on their list of things to do, it is still outside of our permitting.
So what we're going to?
Permit for electric.
No, we're not gonna permit for the electric, but what we're going to do is suggest that if they're going to have any electrical work done, they should contact the state and follow whatever the state requirements are.
Right. Okay.
All right, moving on to item eleven dash four. Discuss and vote on a land swap request at four twenty-eight State Street from Chad and Starlene Varnell. So, this item contains an executive session or conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on a land swap request from Chad and Starlene pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B. Conferences with an attorney for the local public body for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. So I would entertain the motion to.
And, and this is just, and I don't wanna start wrenching.
No, that's all right.
Momentum. Typically, and what I suggest is that because with an executive session, we're discussing something outside the earshot of the general public, it's privileged, et cetera, we have to report it, there's like, something we go into, so it's, it's pretty rough to put it in the middle of a meeting typically, because that means everybody has to leave.
Well, actually, what we do is we adjourn into.
We leave?
Yes.
So, I mean, if that's how you guys do it, that's fine, and I'm happy to do it that way. I did, we'll, we'll talk offline, I did send an email to you a script for this.
Okay.
I would suggest we just open it up and read it, if you can get your. Cause, so, and I'll say this, I'll say this, sorry, bacon here, I mean, executive sessions are really important. You have to go in and out of them in a certain way. Under the Colorado Sunshine laws, there's a lot going on right now as far as litigation between there's lots of litigation going on. And so I, you know, without, I don't, I don't wanna give certain people credit that I don't fully deserve it, and it has nothing to do with picking at all, I just, my concern is that I want, I don't want Pickin to be embroiled in something over a simple no lack of notice or a lack of making a correct statement. So, that's why I sent you that script, if you have it.
And I am not able to open that right now.
Okay, there, I'll have you read it.
Can you read it?
Um, I can read a, yeah, we, I can go through it, sir, and then.
Okay.
Just, if you would just kind of follow my prompts, I'll, I'll help us here. Here, I'll just do this for you. You can.
All right.
You can move for the executive session too.
So I would entertain a motion to enter executive session.
Sorry. Uh, this is Tom. And under CRS twenty-four dash six dash four two, parentheses four, parentheses B. For the purposes of receiving legal advice from the town attorney on a specific legal question regarding request for land swap regarding the property of Porton Hills, State Street.
All right, we've got a motion. And we have a sec.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, so carried. So it is February the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the time is eight oh three PM for the record. Oh, that's only, okay. So we will now adjourn into, and what I did just before we do that, one of our trustees, Lucinda, she's gonna be by phone, is that all right?
We can do that, okay.
Easy.
Stop the meeting, I will restart it again. Actually, no, never mind, we're gonna leave it on so that way, you know, when we're back, okay, forget that, just, thank you.
We talked a whole lot more than anything.
I turned the heaters off.
Yeah, we're out there, so it's cold, so cold, yeah. We can get better.
I know.
Oh, you're good, I, yeah, and I both love.
So, so.
So basically, I can't, yeah.
Well.
Oh, Eddie's mouth. It's actually not, if they just go.
I mean, it's not.
Yeah. Eddie didn't use. I, I just wanted to go up and shove that one. Well, he, he turns a pad, yeah, I know, he does all the time. That's okay, and then it's a. Yeah. With machine age, yeah. Yeah. I think all my sense of. Because they were, yeah. Yeah. I think, uh. Oh, yeah, yeah, tattoos, or silicone, tattoos, yeah, yeah, my cousins. Well, and you, then you have to wear regular. So, yeah. Blessings to Anna, blesses to Coral Springs, she died. So I gotta just move down. But he had remarried. And he's so weird. It's a weird girlfriend, so. Yeah. Material, I don't pay. I'll have my run to war. Has asked you now? Well, eventually, but it was, I was struck, I mean, I opened the door and he's stinky, cause he's been up all week, and he's stopped, he kept falling down, it's just, it's big, I'm noticing this. How's anything else, there's, there's dark. Yeah. And, and he I should quit. Side lights by then, I was I don't smoke nothing on, but I, you're but I decided. So I had quit, and he's not like saying lies, and so I was just like, I, I was absolutely struck, even though he put down, yeah, even though. And so, because it got on, so we go down the basement to the furnace, and he sits down, I sit there across from him, he's like, and he called his cousin, he said, and so he's boss, and well, and so he didn't have, we might be just. And so, well, I'll need to replace. So, I'd like to come back later, okay, so he, he used to go, well, make a thought, do my care. That scared me, yeah, oh, yeah, that scared me, yeah. So anyway, yeah, so he gets back and he does every talk. I offered that, well, at the morning, I offered to talk to him. At something, then we, and then he got back and like, oh, that'd be a good drink, or something. He doesn't, and I think you're in, so. He did, so we, I don't know. I don't wanna add, because, so he, we talked, it's just a while, it's not a perfect sentence, and anyway, on his way to the door, he did turn around, say, can I call you some? Yeah. Please, you can't, so it took him about a week, and I could ask him in that phone, he finally called it, I don't know. We had questions, oh, I, I said, oh. Mom's here for the weekend, so. Seven, nine. One Sunday, I remember, like, he says, what, 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 what we're gonna do? And I, I, I should be on that. You got on, but I didn't know. But, John. I have a thing for people, it was people. That was, I, that was. Yeah. Yeah. That was Sunday, I couldn't stand it. Bryce is late on Tuesday, and I went, somebody called, I didn't know, he's crazy, I was. Yeah, he called me and. So somebody just walked out of. So. And so. He was. Had left the bag. I was embarrassed. And ask. Oh, yeah. So. Remember. Guys. I'm losing me fast. So anyway. That was that long. And then we started to. I don't. It's in front of us, but we were there. Yeah. So he left first. And then we probably go out and then we left. He sort of gave it gone. It's winter. He slid off. To say, and then for that. In the snow. That's. And we offered. All. Wrap her or something.
Yeah, so I did that wall.
She. I was having trouble. Uh. Scary. She took me in. Wall and. So I think. She was.
That's where you wanted to go. Go through. Don't you want a drink?
Yeah. That's not the site. Yeah, I was like. And that was.
Problem.
Yeah, we. We started.
But that's about the strings.
I think that's. When the cats. Our cats that we started taking our cats. I bring this up. So what? Not long. We are first day missing.
Myself.
And I don't. Ever ask. All he said. Like he said, well, so like. And I just. I don't. I don't have. I remember when that wasn't my mom. It is funny. Okay, there it is. That's good. They're good. Sam, hilarious. You know. Yeah. It's on you now. Man, ankles, but just. I was sorry. First time. So then. One way back. That's it. Sorry. Then I can.
Okay.
All right, I want to reopen the regular meeting. The time is now eight nineteen P M. And the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were Sarah Gibbs. Tom Gibb. Clay Buckner.
Buckner.
Buckner. Lucinda Lowell and Eddie Balch. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none. The next agenda item is. Get my computer going again. So we are. On agenda item eleven dash four. So based on the advice from our attorney. Right now, I would say that. The town of Pittkin is not interested in the land swap and we are stopping. And we have no further discussion on this item. Moving on to item two dash four. Discuss and vote on ADA compliance plan for parking on Ninth Street. Town hall parking and also the Ninth Street Pavilion picnic tables. Sarah.
So I reached out to Serse and they did give some advice. And I'm kind of thinking, probably this is for Jesse, so I'll make sure he gets this information. We do have. An email that states what type of circumstance is appropriate for Ninth Street. And also. I would assume town hall parking, but I. I would double check on that. And then with regard to picnic tables, if the pavilion has picnic tables, five percent have to be ADA compliant. If there are less than twenty, then one has to be ADA compliant. And that's the information that we receive from Serse.
Okay, so if there's one, it needs to be ADA compliant then. If there's two, then one of them. Right, all right. So yes, if you will. Get the further information on the surfacing for that. And if you'll get that forward to Jesse. Tom, did you have?
No.
Okay. And we have Lucinda. Did you have any further discussion on that item? Two dash four.
No.
All right. Well, we will move on then. Item two dash five, discuss and vote on a variance request to build a roof over the front porch of the Pittkin Hotel. Ed?
Probably much shorter, I promise. So at our zoning board meeting. We did look at the plans for the porch. At the. Hotel. You wanted to show. Looked at the plans for the hotel. Phil did explain that the porch is actually free standing, not attached to the building.
There's a separation between the building and the porch.
Board did discuss it. Detail. Did have, went out and fixed pictures of some other locations on Main Street. Like the post office and. The address of the other house. What was the benefit? Of this? Sold to. Thought the votes have a porch that extend over the. Depths on the town properties. Zoning board did vote on it. Zero vote. To send it to the board of trustees. With consideration and our recommendation is proven. I do have. While I'm up here, I do have another question for the town. As Jesse asked me to address. And that is on a variance request. On a porch when it's over town property. Can the zoning board approve that or does that have to be the board of trustees? That we don't have anything in the zone, so. Aren't certain.
It's gonna kind of be the same answer. We, we need something. In the zoning code to address that because whoever makes the decision. If, if the owner doesn't like the decision. They can appeal it. If you make the board of trustees the final decision maker. Or the primary decision maker, then the only option a local homeowner has is to appeal it to the district court. We don't want that. So the local. Commission can make the decision. On certain variances. Then they can appeal it to the board of trustees. Or it can go to the board of trustees for a final decision, but. It's better to not have the. The board always be the end all be all, especially when it comes to private homeowners. For variances. I think it's safe, especially if it has to do with town property to leave it with board of trustees, but we do. So, you know, in this case, I think it is better because it's, you know. You don't want to say obstructing, but it is. Crossing over into public property. And that's typically a board of trustee. Decision. But we need to put that in the code.
Okay.
And then for other things, we need, all should discuss that where. You know, because it is a variance, it's not technically. We're not affecting directly a homeowner's or a property owner's rights under the code, but we're. But we're, we are affecting private rights under the code, like not this where it's coming into town property, but their property. And we're deciding against them. They need to have an avenue for due process to appeal. We don't want them, we don't want to constantly be going out to district court. So.
Just for clarification on. The way the zoning code is written now on. Say a variance on a person's property, say for setback.
Right.
And it's decided for, for approved, I should say. Or not approved by the zoning board. Wasn't able to.
That's how you do it now.
Yeah.
That is in the code.
And I think.
Okay.
I'll have to make a firm that it isn't code. Believe it is.
Okay.
But I, I think the concern here was. Since it's on town property.
No, this is done exactly right. I just wanted to be clear that. It should say that though, right? And typically variances again are outside of our code, right? It's a special privilege that. Is being granted to a property or homeowner. And so we're not inhibiting. A right they would have under the code. So that's fine, but I just. It got me scared, the C O thing. So I was. But yeah, no, in this case, I think that's, this is appropriate.
So one question I've got. Is I believe I've seen in the past where the town has issued some variances for people to have things projecting into or onto town property. And at one point we required them to provide some kind of liability insurance. Do we still have any of that, Sarah?
No, we are not doing that. We had three places. It was Sean Cleveland's garage, that's fully in the alley. It was the hotel deck. I don't remember the other place.
So.
But, but no, it's not. It might have been the post office. It was, yes, it was the post office.
Okay, so. Again, this is something that should be addressed in the code. If we're gonna allow things to be built onto town property, especially if they're commercial. Properties. We, we have to have a checklist and one of those. Items on the checklist has to say that the town would be named as an other insured. And they have to sign a liability waiver with, for the town. That's, I mean, that's, that's standard. So. I would assume. I shouldn't assume. The code would need, obviously that needs to be in the code if it's not. There has to be some sort of checklist. Okay, you get a variance. Anytime we're talking about our property. There need, you know, there's certain, needs to be certain things in place, especially like you're saying, like projected. Projected buildings into our property. You know, bare minimum. Insurance coverage and a liability waiver. They're, they're gonna indemnify the town from any. Damage, harm, loss, even to town property. If that collapses and damages the road. Are we paying for the road? Probably are if we granted a variance, but we didn't go, you know, make them go through the proper checklist.
So. What's the next step? I would say for one, we need to get some revisions into the zoning code to address. What we just discussed about having a checklist. So what I would say is before we can grant a variance. Upon the attorney's advice, we need to have a checklist to make sure that these certain things are done. So what I would say at this point right now is the town's not gonna grant this variance tonight.
Or, yeah, you could. And I'm fine, and I'm not trying to stop the momentum of the town again, I know. Do you guys like this? This is fine, you can grant the variance. But granted with condition. Granted with the conditions. That. They. You know, they fulfill whatever obligation we requested them regarding. Indemnification, release of liability and naming us as other insured. That would be enough for me, but yet there's other issues or conditions, now's the time to discuss.
And we would want that. Checklist. Before. Actual construction started, correct?
Yeah, the, the. So a variance, once we granted, they're gonna want to file that variance. With the county to show that they're allowed to build onto town property. In violation of our code, so somebody. In. June, a new board, say everybody's, and I'm not saying that that's not the case here, I saw the names, we're gonna have some overlap. But if an all new board came on. And they realize like we're talking about like, hey, this. Is out of code. Then, you know, if it was ten years from now. All we'd have is the minutes and what we have right now. So any good. Landowner that gets a variance from code, state, local, federal or otherwise. Was gonna wanna go file that code or file that variance with the county record and say, look, nope. I did this, I got my variance. And in order for us to. Give them that variance. We need. What we need, which is, okay, yeah, we approve the variance, but. Until we see our name on the list as other insured. And you sign this indemnification for the town. Then we're not gonna give you your signed piece of paper to go file with the county. It's that simple.
So I. For association to approve it on those conditions. Indemnification. Other insured. And then by that.
Board discussion. Lucinda.
I, I like what Clay has said. I think the. Taylors need to be able to continue to move forward and. Give them our requests of what they need for their insurance and they're gonna want it to.
All right, Tom?
So I guess this is Tom, so. Uh, one more time through the clarifications sequence here. So. The variance is. Granted. Conditional on that variance being filed. On. Liability or insurance being. Provided. For this. Structure. And I must have missed something.
No, I'm just, just to cover the town. That's, I mean, the liability and that is to cover the town. So.
So it's those two things. Basically.
Well, unless, unless.
So if we gave them a variance. They would.
What? Oh, I mean, a motion for this, based on this discussion might sound like. That you move to grant the variance. Upon the condition that the applicant name the town as other insured on their insurance policy. And. That the insurance, of course, covers the construction of the patio. And that the applicant. Execute a. Indemnification or waiver of liability with the town. Something along those lines.
Sounds great.
Did you write that down, Lucinda? Can you make that?
Yeah, don't I wish? No, I, I think that gets everything wrong with.
Tom?
Well, so I see this as doable. I would like to hear from. Public.
Constituents, okay.
People think about this. Robert.
All right, so public comments. Chuck. Given the microphone, you can, you can sit there if you want the microphone.
Chuck Polanski. Joanne, when she had the hotel. Had to put up basically who shows because on the east side of the well was. Had to put up basically who shows because on the east side of the well was out in the street. I spent a lot of hours working in the nest of years and quite a few of those years. And I think what the new town attorney has suggested, especially the town's protected. The hotel hopefully is gonna bring more revenue that's binged in the town and it'll add to the front of the structure. You know, as long as the town is protected, the name litigation that could develop. I asked them, I think it's great.
All right. Any other public comment? Sarah, would you check? Is that Pete?
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, Pete.
Uh, my only comment would be as it relates to the indemnification and insurance. That there be an annual review of that to assure that the town is continue to be covered appropriately.
All right, any other comments? Any other comments on the Zoom?
This is Chad. I just wanna tell you, I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? So I, I would ask you, Clay, examples that you've seen, has it been an annual renewal or annual? Review or?
Yeah, that was whoever that was, that's a great comment. Um, you can do an annual review. Typically, what I like to do with, um. With that language is that you make it subject to. Inspection by the town at the request of the town. So the language that I typically put into something like that would say. Uh, and this isn't word for word, but it would read something along the lines of. The. The owner shall name the town as other insured. Um. You know, regarding the, you know, the variance, whatever the construction is, the patio, and that such. Um, is inspectable by the town at the request of the town at any time in the future, as long as that. You know, structure stands basically. So you, you, you create in perpetuity. Inspection and then it is good. I, I really like the comment. It, it is. It, it makes sense to just go ahead and, and set a note for the town, right? Cause we can say, well, it's inspectable at any time. Five years from now, again, a new board, new, new process or whatever, and we've let it lapse. They forget to do it. All of a sudden, we're not covered. So whatever internal trigger we decide, that's, you know, administrative in nature, um. I like language that just says, look, at any moment, you're gonna have to produce us as other insured. When we request it, you have, you know, five business days to produce your insurance document. You can also have them file it annually. The problem with that is that as soon as somebody gets insurance, they could drop you the next day. Give insurance on the last day of the year and file it, um. So I like at least having the language that they're inspectable at any moment. Uh, but I do like having an internal trigger that requires us to look at it to make sure like, are we actually inspecting it?
To do some follow up, so, okay.
But, yeah.
I think we can get something drafted to, uh, address that. Any other board discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion then.
Well, I'm gonna take this from Tom. Um, this is Lucinda and I will make that motion. Um, to approve their variance, provided they. Uh, get us the information as requested by our attorney. And it can be inspected by the town at any given point. And that the town is considered. Um. An insured. Entity on the policy.
All right. We have a motion.
This is Tom, um. I'm willing to second that motion, provided that the. Actual, the actual, uh, design. And construction components of this are engineered.
Are engineered, okay.
Okay, I go with that.
So you'll accept that revision to your motion then?
Yes, I will.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. To approve the variance request with the requirements stated this evening. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? So carried. Moving on to item two dash six, discuss and vote on the liquor license. Renewal application for Elevated Vacations LLC, also known as the Stumbling Moose Lodge. Sarah.
You have received a copy of the renewal application. All fees have been paid.
Any other board discussion?
This is Tom. I have not come across any reason why. Um, I should not be going to do this.
All right. Public comments. Ramon?
I agree with Tom.
This was one of the. Um, in a previous meeting, there was some discussion. There was some discussion about, uh, this license and whether it needed to be changed to a. I'm not sure what a tavern license instead of the hotel. License, I, I don't know the actual distinction, but what is the case with them?
Okay, we, the states reviewed it, right? And as far as the modification, there was a modification to the. License and the states reviewed that, right?
Correct, and the state approved the modification permit and there was no indication that anything needed to be changed with regard to the type of.
What is the modification?
The. Remodel inside. They took away one room and opened up downstairs. Added a second patio and added a dome. I believe that everything.
All right, any other public comment? Any public comment on the Zoom? All right. With no further discussion then, I would entertain. A motion to approve the liquor license renewal for stumbling moose lodge. In case you can't see that, Lucinda, Tom was pointing at you.
Oh, he was pointing at me.
He was pointing at you, yep.
All right, I shall move, um, with the, um. Application for the Elevated Vacations LLC. Doing business as the Stumbling Moose Lodge.
To approve renewal.
Renewal, I'm sorry, yes.
Right.
It's late and I'm tired.
All right.
Okay, this is Tom and I will second this in this motion.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve the liquor license renewal for Elevated Vacations LLC. Also known as the stumbling moose lodge. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Moving on to item two dash seven. Sarah, treasurer's report.
The treasurer's report is, should be as is, except we did have a change, um. A attorney Buckner. I've heard it like five times.
So the best way to remember my name and I'll take Buckner, but.
Okay.
It's pronounced Bookner, so I always tell people, say Booknerd and drop the D.
Buckner, um, has. Given the town a penalty discount of four hundred and fifty dollars for the month of January, um, until we start giving him more money. So thank you for that. Um, that's the only change to the treasurer's report. I also want to report that the year end finals for twenty twenty-three are. Available online, so that is no longer in draft form. Um, everything is final. Thank you.
All right, any discussion on the dispersments?
Well, this is Tom. I have one last question on the treasurer's report, but we finished our year financially better than we expected and we think it's.
Correct. The town is historically very conservative with regard to sales tax income. So we, we do typically finish, uh, better in that category than we.
No, I, I ran through the dispersments. This is Tom Gibb. I ran through the dispersments and, uh. You know, from paperclip to, to our snowblowers, um. There wasn't anything extraneous in there that, that we could not have gotten by them.
So was that a motion to approve the dispersments? I would. All right.
I'll second it.
And Lucinda second, so we have a motion and a second to approve dispersments as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. All right, moving on to updates, planning and discussion under. Section five, discuss a request from Jake Schellenberg to develop River Street to access his property in block four. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Jake Schellberg picked him. So I, after the last meeting, the last couple of meetings, there were concerns about. Whether or not we could build there and some, uh. Half-hearted threats that they're gonna get the, uh, Arby Court of Engineers and State of Colorado involved. So I made that an initiative to go ahead and contact the state of Colorado. At a long meeting. With multiple people directed by, uh, my attorneys at Law of the Rockies. Uh, who were best suited to answer any questions that might fall into this scenario. And, uh, after. An extensive meeting. Going over all the maps, data, looking at the property. Um, they said, I am, uh, more than welcome to build there. They can't. Stop me from building there and, uh. They stated you may, in, in some instances, you may struggle to get, uh. Mortgage on property kind of depends on the, the rules that a certain mortgage company holds because. Depending on how close you build to the free. But they said, but that would ultimately be up to whoever builds there, so. Um, I wanted to give that update and, uh, let you guys know. And I'm trying to be proactive in making sure that. Things are done properly and, um, I would like to see River Street open. And, um, if, if the town isn't interested in opening, opening the street. Uh, I would like to know because I assume it is a public street owned. Planted as a public street owned by the town. And if I sell off lots. And that's the person's only access to their lots. Legally, even if it's not. Fully developed. Can the person who owns the lots use that access point? To enter their property? I want to make sure that. Um. We don't create any issues there. And if you have questions for me?
So one of the questions that came up before I know was about the irrigation ditch. And about moving the irrigation ditch. So you have it from the state of Colorado that moving the irrigation ditch would not be a problem.
Yeah. Yeah, that typically he's said the process is, so it's, uh. Um. It's, uh, it's been surveyed, right, where it is now. And typically what you would do, if you're going to propose moving it, you do a survey of where you're going to move it to. And then once the process is done, the survey company comes back out and re-surveys. To confirm that it was moved in to the proper location for the suggested.
Okay, you say he stated that. Who, and who is this person with?
That's the Army Corps of Engineers as well as, uh, Law of the Rockies as well as, uh. Try to, the survey company that I, uh, visited with, that actually did the survey on the property. I'll think of their name.
Okay.
Yeah, all family surveyed.
Okay. Anybody, was anybody involved from the state water? Board?
So I don't remember all their titles. There were, uh, multiple people on the Zoom meeting. And, uh, yeah, but it, it was basically the suggest. Suggestion from Law of the Rockies and they brought, there was, uh, uh. I, I don't know if I should call him the local guy, but it was a guy that manages a lot of these types of situations in. Gomson County. And then I had a great guy from Grand Junction, another one from Denver. And I don't remember their specific.
So if I understand it correctly, you're asking for the town of Pittkin to develop the street and move the irrigation ditch. Is that correct?
Right.
At our expense.
Right.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Unless you have some questions.
Okay. Tom, you have anything?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to think about this one. Let my wheels turn.
Okay, Lucinda, you have anything?
Not really. I've got a few questions I'd like to ask, but I'm not sure if they're. In line with this or not.
Well. As far as questions for Jake or?
Yeah, questions for Jake. I just. I wanna make sure, and maybe you're all gonna tell me he doesn't need it, but. Cause it's only going on to his property, but it goes through other people's property. Has he talked to his neighbors?
I, I could not hear her question.
She wanted to know if you've spoken with any other neighbors that touch the river street.
It would be affected by moving the ditch.
Right.
Is that what you're talking about, Lucinda?
Moving the ditch and for that matter, putting in a major road.
Right.
Uh, no, no, I haven't, um. It, I feel like it's somewhat irrelevant. Um, it's a, it's a platted street. And we already know where they stand. They're not. You know, they're not in favor of it, um, but, um. And also. I need access to those lots, so. I think that's irrelevant. I don't, I have had comments about it, uh, reducing property values and. And I feel very strongly within the act, the opposite, and actually improve property values.
So my question for you, Jake, would be, what justification do you see of why the town should? Make that expense to. Develop that street and move the ditch. make that expense to develop that street and move the ditch?
So, typically, when a neighborhood is developed, all the property is privately owned by a property owner. And then, once they develop their streets, they be, they may deed those or give those to the town. This is already owned and controlled by the town. And, uh, you know, the, the fact that there's going to be homes built there that are going to bring in, um, a significant tax revenue to the town, uh, it brings value to the town. And, uh, so that's some of the reasons why I feel like the town should, uh, step in and help them, help improve the overall, uh, quality of the town.
So, you, you, you mentioned property taxes. Have you made any estimates on value of a house? What you might expect the value of a house to be and exactly how much in property taxes that would actually bring into the town of Pittkin?
Uh, yeah, so the, the base of the home price is going to be around seven hundred and fifty thousand. I don't think we're going to get below that. Um, and that's not a significant amount of money that comes to the town of Pittkin. Um, but it's also, you know, we can't just specifically look at that. You're, you're increasing your population. You're increasing the number of people that come into town. And so, ultimately, they're going to be spending money at the other businesses in town to increase that revenue. So, to just lay a hard number on, on just what that property tax brings in, I think is, is, uh, not accurate. And, um, it will definitely increase the quality of the town and bring a lot of value to the town.
So, I, I'm actually really glad you mentioned increased traffic. So, if the town develops the road and those people request road maintenance and they request snow removal, and there's additional traffic on Main or State Street, which we know right now, Main Street is in pretty poor shape. So, additional traffic, it's going to have a detrimental impact, I would think, on Main Street or State Street, if you want. But Sarah, do you happen to know on property tax, just a, maybe a ballpark on, let's say, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, how much the town of Pittkin would see in property taxes?
If I had to really ballpark it, I would say two hundred dollars.
You said two hundred?
Correct.
Two hundred dollars?
If you give me a second, I can, I can get a closer ballpark, but I think that's probably barely close.
And I think I asked you, or Jake, maybe about if you had put together any estimates on what it would cost to develop the streets. And have you done any more on that? Have you looked at what it would cost to develop a street?
Uh, no, I figured the town would do it. I think there's a couple of other options. If the town, if the town doesn't want to incur the expense of developing a currently platted street, one of the things they could do is consider vacating that street. And, uh, at that point, it becomes, you know, the property owner's property. And then I would just develop the street on my own. Um, but being it's owned by the street, it's a platted street, uh, I felt like this was the appropriate way to go.
Okay. Tom, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, well, I'll carry on with the three questions. So, this is just for clarification for me. So, this ditch that we're going to survey and move, is this ditch on your property or in the roadway?
Uh, it's in the road.
And then the other thing is, and you have been all over the town of Pittkin along with the best of us. And you have seen that some of our lanes and streets and even our main thoroughfares are, um, in, in Bad Brother with lots of snow melt and spring runoff and all that, they get pretty sketchy in these spots. And, and in the development of this road, um, are we, are we talking about, uh, being happy with passable for a while as we, as, uh, for example, uh, over there on Armstrong Ditch? We, you got a track through this. It's pretty rough still. You can get dump truck through there, but it's rough.
Yeah, so I think, uh, so I've asked Jesse about that. Um, and I, he, he obviously knew it was rough. And he, he said that he was doing a lot of work, which you guys saw it, and it was very impressive. The, the streets were way better than last year than they have been in previous years. And so, he said he kind of used up his budget and his hopes was to, uh, go ahead and improve that roadway.
My reference was not to improving Armstrong.
Right.
It was about
I know.
just trying to get a road in.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, uh, I think you do the basics to start with. You've done a whole construction process, project going on, multiple projects going on. Those trucks could be, uh, hard on the road. So, you don't want to make the road perfect before they go in there. And we, you, you've seen kind of, uh, the process in, in kind of, uh, waiting until a lot of the projects are more so complete. And then in doing that, uh, final top coat, so to speak, on the road to make it nice.
And Eddie's, Eddie's, uh, point over here regarding the cost of main, of, of maintaining our streets in this town, uh, is probably one of our biggest expenses. Uh, what with snow removal on top of that or with it, however you want to call it. So, um, we live in a difficult spot and as so many other communities were on a budget. And, uh, so I guess that's my two questions. How, how, how much of a track do we need in here initially? How long do we have to bring it up to, you know?
Yeah, I wasn't, I don't think it would ever need to be like sixty-six feet wide or anything like that. I think you're at thirty foot's about a minimum of width of a town street. And I think that would be more than enough. You're, you're not going to have a ton of traffic. There's only a few homes. The current homes on the, on one side of River Street, if they chose to use it, plus the few that we're going to build, uh, sold down on the water. So, it's not like you're getting a ton of traffic.
Yeah, I was fishing after expectations in comparison to some of our, what we call alleys. You know, you got a twelve-foot driving surface.
Well, I-
This is in good shape, but that's all it is.
Well, I was proposing, you know, I was wanting to know if legally a home, if a property owner could use that real estate, developed or not, without gravel? If they legally can drive on the grass to get to their property and use it the town right-of-way. And, you know, at that point, we have, you've seen that we have a lot of proactive homeowners in this community. If someone starts to build a house, they may be will, willing to put a road in and, and, uh, save the town that expense.
I think that's one of the problems that we have with the town of Pittkin is we don't have a set of development standards, one of which would include building new roads. So, that's something. And as Ramon mentioned, it would be nice to be more proactive. Unfortunately, we're in the middle of this right now, but that's something that I think is, is something that needs to be looked at very seriously, is to have a set of standards for the town of Pittkin. One of those would include development of the road. When you mention about property owners using the existing road to access their property now, if it's muddy, if it's whatever, and they're doing, let's say they cause ruts and they cause runoff, and maybe it goes on to somebody else's property. That's a concern. So, that's something that, that I think that we would have some discussion with legal advice about what are the requirements for the town to provide access and to allow access like that? Because that's, that's a concern. Somebody could come in and, yeah, whether they bring in one load of material or they don't bring in any material, they do destruction to town property. And especially if that creates a runoff that runs on to somebody's private property, that's a concern. So, do you have an idea about how many homes that you're looking at for this?
Uh, correct. Um, it's six.
Six?
Right.
Okay. And Sarah, did you get us a number for the property?
Two twenty-five.
Two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, if we take six times two hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's a little over twelve hundred dollars a year. I'm thinking it's going to take quite a few years just to come up with the money to, for the town to actually, if we were interested in putting a road in, to have any payback on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Uh, but all in all, your, your, uh, your, your town's moving forward rather than just sitting stagnant. And I think there's a lot of value to that. It will probably increase property values all throughout the town. Um, but that being said, like you said earlier, uh, you would welcome legal advice, and that's, that's what I'm looking for. If, if the town isn't willing to go ahead and complete this, if someone buys these lots to go ahead and start building a house, I need to know if I can tell them that they can legally access their property via an undeveloped town-platted street. And they very well may choose to go ahead and start putting gravel down or a road base like people have done in town in the past. Uh, I would think they would because they're not going to enjoy getting stuck or creating ruts. But, but I think I need to make sure that I can legally tell them what they can do.
All right. Clay, can you speak to that? Without any warm-up?
Typically, developers develop streets. So, even in a platted county-town scenario, and, and what you'll hear is a term called orphaned lots. Have you, have you, anybody heard this term orphaned lots? And so, what happens is, yes, there's platted lots. Yes, they have value. Yes, you can buy and sell them. But there's been no developed street up into that lot. So, it's considered orphaned. It's out on its own. You can't access it. You can't typically, and this is a, for town legal advice, you can't allow people to drive over on, like, just because it's a town right-of-way, it means it's town property. We can control who uses it, whether it's a platted street or not. You can, e- even Main Street, if we wanted to, you guys could decide, we're going to put barricades up between these blocks and redirect traffic outside of there. It's town property. Town gets to decide what they want to do with it. So, the typical situation, and, and so the, the short answer is no. I mean, it's not legal to drive on, on, um, just drive on lots for the reasons that the mayor discussed. Uh, roads have to be, even, you know, they're platted, yes, but that just means that's where the design was meant for them to go. Roads have to meet construction criteria for those reasons. Runoff, same reason you'd have, um, you know, a runoff in a snow plan, especially, you know, what are we at here, ninety?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two hundred feet. Uh, you guys get a lot of snow. These are all things that I'm, you, you have done development. You have, you understand these things. Uh, when you develop a piece of property, you have to have, okay, where's yours, where's your snow going to go? Where's your snow going to go when it melts? What property is downstream from where your snow melts is this going to affect? And that's why, uh, ditch rides, irrigation, uh, roadways has to all be kind of done in like a master plan sort of scenario so that you're not building things that run off into other people's property. So, the answer, the short answer is no. Can't drive on unimproved right-of-ways. They have to be improved and they have to be done to a standard. Typically, either the county or the town will have road standards that require this many, you know, this big of a ditch, this many inches of gravel, this many inches of hard pack. And then, you know, then you can, you're good to go. And then you make a deal of how you're going to grade it and who's going to plow it, blah, blah, blah. But, uh, no, you cannot drive on grass or undeveloped roadways for the reasons that the mayor stated, because you're going to create a problem and you're going to get stuck. You can't allow citizens to build their own roads without permits on, uh, platted streets because they won't be, they'll be to whatever that private party wants to build it to. And that standard might not meet county or town road standard. So, short answer is no. There's a lot more to discuss with that. Um, but that's why, you know, you said we should probably discuss it, but no. You, again, I'm not giving you legal advice. Or you have your own lawyers, but the town should not, I would say the town, there's no way you should allow someone to drive on, on unimproved right-of-ways.
All right.
Right.
Any other board discussion? All right, we will move on to the next item. Board of Health meeting. This was, you know what, Chuck? How about you do this? Would you mind submitting your comments to the board? So, we would have them before the next meeting. And if you want to bring them up at the next meeting, that would be good. Uh, the only reason I, what's that? Yes, yes. And so, and, and the reason I say that is because we have a, a public hearing coming up yet. And just in the matter of time, just trying to move things along. If you're okay with that? All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, on the agenda, we've got, uh, discuss and vote on the proposed OWTS design for the Pittkin Hotel. I believe we've had a request to table that
Right.
at this time. That's correct? Okay. So, we will move on to the next item, which is discuss and vote on an OWTS variance request for two twenty-two Armstrong Street. And this item also will contain a public hearing. So, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing for the OWTS variance request for two twenty-two Armstrong Street. Do we have any? The applicants, can you hear us?
Hi, I see the engineer is online.
Hi, this is Chris in Ginger Geigley.
Hello.
Um, yes, we have a variance request, and I believe Gala is there to present that for us. If you would please, Gala.
Okay. So, you're asking for Gala to present for you?
Yes.
All right. Gala.
Yes. Eddie. This is for two twenty-two Armstrong. Um, it is a repair of a damage system. And, uh, they have a engineered drawing, but they didn't want to do the big, huge drawing until the board weighed in on the variances needed. Um, because of the location already of every well and septic in that whole area, uh, they have had this engineered and have done a really good job and done the best they can in getting the septic as far away from their own well as can be. And, uh, I wish I had a magnifying glass because it is a small one here. Um, it is plenty- Um, it is plenty far away from the new. Location of Armstrong Creek. That's not an issue. And. Should have looked at this uh. In the margin. Do you remember the measurements, Tom?
Yes, I remember that.
Okay, Tom's got the measurements in his head on how far. Uh, from their existing well to the soil treatment area. About seventy-five feet is my right. Is that it?
Seventy-seven feet.
Seventy-seven feet.
Um, and that is because. Jake. Gave a permission. For the. Soil treatment area. To be moved. To within five feet of his property, which gave him an extra five feet because uh. Rate forty-three says ten foot from property. Unless you get permission from the city. So Jake was very amenable to this. And moved him into the seventy-seven plus foot mark of their well. I, just by way of talking and uh information. I will tell you that. As far as I know, on that side. Of Main Street on. I don't know how far up. All of the construction over there came in under. Um, old regulations and all of those wells over there. I only know two. That uh were recently installed and Jake's was one down there and I have one up there on Third Street. That managed to make that magic hundred foot mark number. Everything else over there is in the fifty foot range. Mr. Geigley managed seventy-seven feet here. And um. Good for him. And oh, not only is it seventy-seven feet, but he has uh. Will be upgraded from a gravity flow. To a uh pressure dosing system, Elgin system. Three foot sand base under it. Or two, I forget. Um, so this is. A pretty large upgrade for. Uh. The quality of the fluid. Interfacing. Of the natural soil.
And. Another benefit is it is all confined onto his own property. Which is good.
So I. Did you have something else?
No question.
All right. Well, I just noticed in the application that uh. The applicant has six bedrooms. And so they're actually looking at addressing. The additional capacity. With the OWTS, they're going to add another five hundred gallon tank. Is that right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes.
Okay. And that way that should get them within the requirements. Or six bedrooms should be at least. Well, twelve hundred and fifty would only be good for four bedrooms. So with additional two bedrooms, if they add additional five hundred gallon capacity, that that will help. Them meet that requirement. Right?
Yes.
Chris, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, no, that that pretty much covers it. The uh, the system was designed. And spectred and sized appropriate for six bedrooms. That's all I wanted to add. That's why the five hundred gallon tank was added.
Well, and we appreciate you upgrading this. Capacity to uh. Address what you have. Any other board questions, comments? Lucinda?
Eddie, I think I need to recuse myself because I was the representative, the Geigleys, when they bought the property. And I've talked to others and I've gotten, some say yes, some say no, but I just feel better than I do. Unless it's going to cause a major problem.
Well. Clay, would you like to weigh in on that comment?
Can you ask a question in a different way?
I would like to have legal advice as to whether Lucinda needs to recuse herself. Uh, given that she was the. Builder involved with the sale of the property.
For the OWTS discussion?
Yes.
I mean, so typically for recusal. There's two part analysis. It's whether there's financial. Interest or personal interest. I'd argue that the financial, it's already been sold. She's already seen the financial interest in the property. She doesn't have any further financial interests. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you have any personal interest in the property or do you, is there the appearance of the public that you have a personal interest in this project?
No, I do not.
Is there a condition in the original real contract for real estate? That talked about. Helping. Get, was this contemplated when this, when this was sold or is this something that came up since it was sold?
It was an issue uh while we were getting to closing, um, but it has changed dramatically.
Were there like any, did you make any promises to this, to the buyer that you were going to help get them passed like water thing? Wasn't a condition of this. I I don't see, I can't see anything, even the last one was a stretch. I'm just making sure that it doesn't, there's no. The biggest thing with recusals is if you feel comfortable. Then typically, if there's no personal or financial interest, then you should just continue.
Okay, I I agree. I just wanted to hear it from.
Oh, and that's, I like that. I like that. I like that you guys are asking the question because it shows that you care about. Being objective with your decisions, so.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions?
No, no, I've been over the uh permit and it's very complete.
All right, so. Tom? You're answering? Public comment?
Simply for verification. The variance request. Is really just for the seventy-seven feet of the well versus the hundred feet. Right, that's really.
Right. I believe that's correct. Oh. Also the five feet and and we have a written. Notice from Jake saying that he approved that. So. We do have that. So basically, just to go over the application. What they're asking for is to repair and replace the soil treatment area and maximize the distance from the existing well. To the new soil treatment area with upgraded Elgin style system. The plan shows all the. Neighboring wells, shows the setbacks, shows what they're asking for. And as been stated, it is an upgrade from a traditional gravity system. So. I think what we can. Certainly consider is. It should be an improved. Discharge to the soil area. With what they're proposing.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? Any other comments on the Zoom? Oh, wait a minute. Ramon?
Wait, I I looked at the. This fact that was published online. It's difficult to see in such a small scale. Um. Then. I could not tell when it showed. The location of any. Anything on the. Uphill side of the property that connects property up. Location of well or septic. Or anything else. And. What I guess what my real question is. Is there something? On that side of the property? That prevents. A well from being moved that direction. To be further away from the. Proposed location of the.
Gala, can you address that?
Yes. It did not. It did not appear that the well could be moved to. Any other location due to. Pre-existing systems. In the area. I do know.
Pre-existing OWTS systems.
Yes, okay, yes. I do notice that they are not all drawn on, but. No, the well could not be moved. And uh. Something else I wanted to say, forgot what it was now. Oh, just for your information, and I know it's not legally binding, but I did ask uh. The Geigleys what their intended use of this building was, and it is not at all for short-term rental. They will be there occasionally. Um, and they will have friends and family there and that's why they wanted more veterans. So they have it for their families and friends, but it's not for a rental.
Yes.
I know it's not legally binding, but that's, that is their intent.
I'll just explain, the reason for my question is that. You know, the. This is a problem that has occurred in this town before and. Engineers frankly have ignored it. The rate forty-three. In fact, I I think it's on the. The page that. Gala. Submitted with it. I don't have the exact wording, but. Basically, rate forty-three forbids branding of variants. If the property can't accommodate. A conforming system. And so. You know. No one has has mentioned. You know, only mentioned putting in the news. The the new enforcement field. And the distance to the existing well. Well, if the property can afford. Accommodate. A well that's a hundred feet away. Then it. It would be against rate forty-three. That's, that's why I asked and it doesn't show. On the map, so.
And I don't, I don't know that rec forty-three actually says that. You have to move a well to gain. Conformity.
Says if it can accommodate.
A system.
A a conforming system.
Which would be an OWTS system. I don't believe it would be a well. I know you don't agree, but and and I can tell you because I know where the neighbors. Well and septic is, so if they move towards the one direction, I know that's. Going to be worse. So.
Well, that's why I'm asking because it's not shown on the.
All right. Any other public comment? Any Zoom comment? Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I believe uh Gala covered everything properly. We we did our due diligence with all the neighboring wells and septics. To locate everything and. Um, to to your point, Eddie, if if we move that well in any other direction other than where it is right now. We will be closer to somebody else's OWTS. Um, and that's not going to do us any good. So what we did was. Tried to get the maximum distance we could from our own well and stay downstream from our well with the upgraded OWTS, and that's what we're presenting. Uh, eventually for approval. Right now, we just need the variance to be. I guess within the hundred feet of our own well. Um, and also the five foot setback with our uh property line with Jake.
All right, if there is no further discussion, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Sarah, do you happen to have a copy of the agenda? Because my computer just died. Oh, wait a minute, got one right here. All right, so. We've had discussion. We've had a public hearing. It's now closed. So. Any other board discussion? On the OWTS variance request? Then I would entertain a motion to vote on the OWTS variance request for two twenty-two Armstrong. I think she just pointed at you, Tom.
Yeah, thanks, you're good. Okay, so this is Tom. And I have. Been associated with this for some little while. And this is the best. Option that there is available. And so I move that we approve this request.
All right, we have a motion.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to. Approve the OWTS variance request for two twenty-two Armstrong Street. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Go carry. Moving on, reports. Uh, I had some information on the computer that is now. Black, so I'll have to bring that report up next week. Yeah, and it's plugged in, so I'm not sure what, anyway. So the mayor has. No report for this evening. Sarah?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. I have a question for the board. Um. Would it be all right if I started a YouTube channel so that we can post our meeting video? Our uh. Website does not post video. And there's not another way to be able to put it out there. I fairly certain I can set it up so that there are no comments or interaction. It's just there. So that people can watch it. So. If that.
I'm good with that.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, next. We have to adopt. An information security policy. Uh, for. SIBA, which is the state organization that helps us with our website. So I'm looking at some options. They've provided with a couple of templates, and so I'll have those in March. And I'm working on my certification to be a notary. So as soon as I have that, I will let you know. Unfortunately, I cannot notarize for family, so that puts out. A a fair chunk of the town, but I will be happy to serve you at the notary in the near future. That's it.
All right, so the one that's. The second thing you're talking about has to do with cybersecurity. And requirements of government now to try to help protect. All this information that's now online. So that's one of the things that she's working on. Uh. Broadband. Do we have any kind of an update on that? I know there was something that we were going to apply for and looks like, or. Actually, it was Vision or.
It was Visionary and they reached out um about three weeks ago and said, can the town write a letter? Because we are looking into some grants. And then they reached out again and said, never mind. We will never be in black. And so they have. Um. Before really even getting started, I did speak to the representative, I think his name was Brian. And I. Really worked hard to try to convince him that we have quite a large population in the summer and that we would have some. Court Street properties um. As well, who'd be interested? And they just did not see it as being uh feasible financially to provide any type of service to the town. So that's kind of where we left it.
They were talking about like a satellite relay or something and maintenance and repairs and getting to it and all that was all part of that, right?
Right, correct. Correct.
So. We need to reach out again, I believe, to uh. Cory and.
So Cory and Michelle were both CC on all of those emails back and forth. So after I spoke with Brian on the phone, he sent a recap email and everybody was CC'd on it. So I think everybody's kind of up to date with. What happened. With that most recent scenario. Um. And and yeah, that.
If you could just do a follow-up with Cory and Michelle. And just say, you know, you've now seen the reply from Visionary. What's next? What's next?
Mm-hmm.
Because I just read an article. They talk about, I believe there's eight hundred something, eight hundred and twenty-six million dollars for the state of Colorado to help provide broadband, uh, high-speed internet for rural underserved areas. And I would say we certainly
qualify.
So.
Yeah.
If you would follow up on that, Sarah, when you get a chance.
I will, yes.
Okay. Lucinda, did you have a comment?
No, I just said I think we would qualify.
Yes, so. That was one of the things that was gonna be on my report. So we've got it covered. All right. And we have written reports for the building inspector, the zoning board. If you want to see the approved zoning board minutes from the previous meeting, the ones that are approved, you can go online. The link is right there. Sarah's got it on the agenda. And all the other commissioners have written reports. So with that, any other board discussion? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. Lucinda, go for it. I've read her lips. She said I had to make a motion to adjourn. Tom?
This is Tom here.
All right, we got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. She raised her hand. That would be an aye. So let's go home. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your time.